Okay, sorry for the late start. I'm just gonna wait for one of the supervisors to return. What? Is he on the line? Okay, make sure. Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise. Supervisor Brotherton will do the inauguration.
Oh Heavenly Father, we came before you with Thanksgiving hearts this morning for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Mojave County. We pray that you give us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all of our citizenry. Lord, guide us and direct us. Keep us in your perfect will. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. He's there? Okay. Okay, as you see, I am not Chairman Watson. He is out on some medical leave. But he is on the phone for a short window of time. And he has asked me to please have an agenda item that he wishes to discuss. So if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move Agenda Item 29 up to the front, right here, so we can discuss it.
Second. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Chairman Watson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So Agenda Item 29. It's discussion possible action to authorize staff to either, one, secure the services of a Phoenix lobbyist and bring back the contract for final approval, or, two, proceed in the hiring of a professional part-time temporary to serve as a legislative liaison in addition to the job functions outlined in the job description, including environmental issues, special projects, property management, and economic development. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we discuss Item 29.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's discuss.
I'll go first, I suppose. I've been thinking about this long and hard, mostly because the people whose opinion I respect, including my assistant Nancy McLean disagrees with me. And I decided not to change my mind. I believe that rather than having a Phoenix lobbyist represent the county checking legislation, that'd be more cost-effective to have a temporary part-time employee who's at-will and who not only monitors the legislation via the Internet access, but also does other special projects as needed. I think that's a more cost-effective use of our dollars.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
When I put this on the agenda, it was just to monitor legislation and nothing else. We've kinda gotten away now. We have a special projects person, which is somebody new, which that motion would handle. I believe that if it was so easy that we could look on the Internet and follow these items, we could've been doing it in the past. I think that we've just had a few items that have come forward that are costing, or potentially will cost the county millions of dollars from what the state have done. And I think that we need to hire somebody on a temporary basis, a professional organization out of Phoenix, just to work during the legislative session and to only give us daily updates, which should be also given to the other elected officials, the sheriff, the attorneys, and those people. That's my opinion.
Okay.
If I may. Mrs. Chair. This is part of the reason why I came down on the part-time employee. There is a... There is truth to what Supervisor Johnson has said. And we have been blindsided by legislation which could have potentially cost the taxpayers millions. For the most part, I think we either have unscrambled the egg or managed to minimize things. I think the real cure to that is for this board to be more engaged with our state representatives and our state representatives to be more engaged with this board. And I think over the last year, that's been happening. Most of the, in fact, all of the financial damage that we're referring to that could've arisen occurred from prior to this year. There are issues that arose in 2012, 2011. I think our current state representatives, I think our current state senator, I think this board has been very good at engaging with our legislature. I think I spoke with Representative Goodell on a dozen occasions, half of those in Phoenix, and similar with Representative Borelli. And I'm ashamed to say only once or twice with Senator Ward, but I'll correct that this coming year. But that engagement is what will solve the problem we're trying to deal with, not hiring a lobbyist, in my opinion. Or at least, the most cost-effective method of resolving the problem is the engagement with our representatives. It's not hiring a lobbyist.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Chairman. And I agree with Supervisor Moss. I don't really think that we need to engage a professional unit from Phoenix area. And my thoughts are is to employ a part-time employee to monitor the legislative activities. And also, we have several very large projects coming down the line that we could use a lot of help on. So I would like to... To think about the proposed hiring of a part-time employee for the engagement of legislative agendas and also several of the part-time and special projects that we'll be initiating in this next year. And I think it's very important that we do that.
Okay. Supervisor Brotherton, do you have anything?
Well, I know there's been some confusion. And I've been listening to some of the... Some of my constituents, and they've been very confused. And of course, to be real honest with you, they're very much against spending any money for any of this because they think we should be doing it. I don't think they understand how many bills are presented. Maybe there's like 1,300 sometimes that go through there. And the Board of Supervisors can keep an eye on that. I mean, you can watch it as much as you can from here, but there's just a lot of other things that we have going on right here in our own districts that we have to take care of. And we just can't watch everything. So I do feel like we need to have someone who is primarily doing that and watching that for us. And yet, by the same token, I'm a little confused as to whether it's a lobbyist that we need or the part-time employee. So I'm just... I'm still kind of struggling with that.
Okay. I'd like to say something. When this motion was first presented by Supervisor Johnson last month, the motion was for a very specific scope of work to be done down in Phoenix by someone who's connected, who knows the process, who knows the people, who knows how these things are done. And so, we had instructed staff to go back and get some... I guess a quote request went out. And in our packets, and if you can look at it yourself online, we received several offers and several proposals for people who do these things down. Now, I never saw this as an in-house position. And I have a big problem with that. This is something that is for the legislative session, which is 100 days. When Supervisor Johnson talked about it, we talked about somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 a month for those three to four months. I think that was what I was thinking would be a very good investment, given some of the problems we had in the past. But as Supervisor Moss said, it's been true that this past year, our representatives have been much... Well, I can't say better because I have no frame of reference from before. But I know I've heard about it. When I needed Senator Ward to help me with HB 2178, she was right on it. And I think we have a great staff down there. But I still do think, and I guess because I feel we've been burned several times, and it's not really the fault of anyone. It's not that no one's... They're not doing their jobs. It's just the nature of the way business is done down in Phoenix, that it's done very quickly, sometimes on purpose. So we don't find out. I did get a call from one of our representatives about a bill, asking how it will affect Mojave County. So I think just us talking about it in public has, you know, made a difference. But right now, I'm not for hiring someone in-house. And I would still like... We still are getting proposals. Even this morning, a new email came in from... You know, I think what chills people is the word lobbyist. It would just be for not someone to champion issues on our behalf. It's just somebody who hears things and knows what's going on. Because the ways that they do things down there is not like the way you and I would do a little negotiation thing. So that's where I'm coming from. And I'd still like to get... I still don't think we have all the information that we need. One of the firms down in Phoenix didn't even give us a quote. They said that they still wanted information. They would customize it for us. Some of them had flat fees. And like I said, as of today, we still got some more offers in. So I would like to still... I know we're getting late, and it starts next month, the session. But I'd still like to get some more information. Does anybody have any?
If I could, Madam Chair. My recollection is, and I didn't bring my computer with me, just what I read over the weekend, that the quotes we were getting from the lobbyists were in the $40,000 to $50,000 range.
One was 30,000, and I think one was 45,000. That was a flat fee. They were, you know, old. We did get one that said that they would... They wanted to know more. I guess we weren't absolutely specific about what we wanted. And that they would work with us to customize it to exactly what we want. And that's what I saw this as.
Madam Chair, yes, I believe it. It goes to the fact that we have the assessor and the treasurer and the recorder, the county attorneys. So when they're looking at legislation, some of those have hidden fees in, or they have things that will require, say, the county attorney to do more work that might cause us more money. So it's more than issues that just... We might traditionally think of and only affect us. I believe that we can offer somebody a four-month contract or a five-month contract for a fee of $2,500 to $3,000 a month if we happen to think that our legislatures will keep us to date on these 1,300 bills, which I think's gonna be hard for them to even read the $1,300 bills. We could do something where we hire somebody and then see how the legislatures do. But it's not their responsibility. I mean, in a way, it is their responsibility to let us know. But if they don't do it, we can't hold them accountable. So I would be willing to say that if we tried it this session, and if it works out, great. And if we decide we don't need them, then we could go another direction.
So what I'm hearing is that we set the rate we want. We say we're willing to spend between $2,500 and $3,000 a month for that session. And that is... What can you provide us for that, correct?
Right. And I think it would just be a daily update. You know, so many bills have been dropped. These bills affect the county. They affect the assessor, the treasurer. They could be distributed to the manager, who has a list that attaches to the chairman and board members, plus all other electeds. So they can see if there's something that they might not be aware of coming down the path. That would be my...
Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Well, I guess I have somewhat of a disagreement. We certainly have a presence with our organization of CSA and also the organization of ACO giving us that information to that extent. And I'd like to just go back to the point that we made earlier, I made earlier, that we could certainly hire a part-time individual to monitor that. And we have several major projects coming down the line that would be very advantageous to have a special person work on. So that's pretty much where my position is.
I think the... One of the problems with that, it would be that these issues coming down are so specialized, you know, such where I think we're talking about the wolf and some environmental issues that have a... We need someone who has a very specific realm of knowledge. Am I misunderstanding you, Supervisor?
Well, that's one of the issues. But I also see some issues that are coming along that will have a lot to do with economic development. And another project in which Mojave County may be taking over a larger responsibility in some of our local opportunities.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Well, just to be clear, are we contemplating tabling this? Are we gonna vote on it now? I mean, because we do have a deadline of January, first week of January for session. But are we gonna kick it until next, the first week of January? Are we gonna roll the dice and see what happens with the vote now?
When does the session start this year?
Right, it's starting... Oh, Madam Chair, if I may. It starts in January, and I think Supervisor Moss is right. We either make a... We either move ahead today or kill it.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the... We proceed in the hiring of professional part-time temporary employee to serve as a legislative liaison in addition to the job functions outlined in the job description, including environmental issues, special projects, property management, and economic development.
No clarification? Are you talking about an in-house, part-time?
Yes. It would essentially be option two on Item 29.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, for clarification, what are the requirements in the benefit package for that? I mean, so people understand.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, what I believe we're contemplating is a part-time employee that would be at-will. The employee would be... We developed a budget for that specific employee. I also developed a job description for your consideration for that employee. Does that answer your question?
No, I think just for the record, so that people understand, if they go back and look at it, this would be paying how much? What are the... Is it a four-year degree? When we're talking about part-time, is that 30 hours? Or I mean, just so we have it on the record?
When I read the backup material, it was a four-year degree with three to five years' experience in dealing with these legislative and governmental issues.
And is that person gonna be here? Are they gonna be in Phoenix? Are they just gonna be monitoring bills from here?
My understanding, after reading the backup material, that they'd be here monitoring the legislation. But they would be authorized to travel, I believe, once every two weeks to Phoenix in order to interact with legislatures and things of that nature.
And that's... Those travel expenses, are they part of the salary? Or is that extra?
Based upon reading the backup material, the total package was $60,000 per annum. Could be roughly half of that if we're using half a year.
For part-time.
Right.
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Please.
Okay. How long... We're talking about part-time. Are... How long is it gonna be before we reevaluate this and see if it's working for us? Or if we need something else, or do something different? Yes?
And let me clarify. I might've misspoke earlier. It's a... For a temporary employee, and the proposal is for six... To hire this employee for a six-month period. I believe the legislative session is 180 days. So it would be at least to carry us through the legislative session. The employee would be at-will, which his services could be terminated at any time. Supervisor Moss is correct. It would take at least a bachelor's degree with considerable experience in different areas, such as economic development. And the employee would be working, I would suggest... I didn't see it being working less than 40 hours a week. It would be a full-time temporary position.
That's different, a full-time temporary. But your motion was for part-time.
Well, then I can amend my motion because I believe... I'll say it this way. I hereby move to... I move to amend my motion to authorize staff to proceed in the hiring of a professional temporary employee to serve as a legislative liaison in addition to the job functions outlined in the job description, including environmental issues, special projects, property management, and economic development. This employee is to be an at-will employee and will serve for a period not to exceed six months.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
amend the motion.
All right. We have a motion for discussion.
Madam Chair, I guess it's still a little... The budget's $60,000, Mr. Hendrix. So it's $10,000 a month we're paying him? Or does that include a vehicle? And do they still have...
I believe I... Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I believe I did include a tenancy budget, which included travel. It also... It included salary, so... And supplies, standard budget that's prepared for a department. And so, the total budget packet, including all travel or vehicle allowance, whatever vehicle's being used, is included in that sum I provided.
And then we'll be providing office space for them?
That's correct.
And then that also includes workman's comp benefits and all that, too?
Whatever benefits are provided for temporary hire.
I have, you know, we started out with a very narrow scope. It was just gonna be to keep us surprised of what was going down in Phoenix. And now that has morphed into a big job with, you know, pay and benefits and cars and travel. And that is not what I think the original intent of this was. So I have a big issue with that.
Madam Chairman, if you look... One of the things that we try to do as staff is provide the board with what the actual motion was for the particular item. And what was motioned and what the staff was directed to look at and provide the Board of Supervisors was the possibility of hiring either a part-time person or a part-time firm to act as lobbyist. And with the staff tried to capture the understanding that Supervisor Johnson had for that particular job description for a lobbyist. Secondly, we were asked to put together a job function that may add other functions to the lobbying efforts and to come back with a recommendation as soon as possible. And that's what I did.
And this person would report to who?
I believe Steve Moss... It was Steve's motion, Supervisor Moss's motion at that particular board meeting. And I would recommend that this particular individual would report directly to the county administrator, to myself.
Right. So now we have somebody who's monitoring legislation, reports to you, and then you, you know, give all the information out to us or to... So you're gonna be in charge of the liaison, the governmental liaison? And I don't know.
Madam Chairman, if we hired a firm or if we hired a lobbyist, who would they be answering to? I mean, who would they be reporting to on a regular basis?
That's something we would have to...
Madam Chair, if I may. The way I envisioned a firm would be a daily report must like the Capital Times, where it comes in and says, these are the bills that affect Mojave County. And point of contact could've been the administrator or it could be the chairman, whoever would like to do it. But it would come in and then be distributed to all elected officials. That was mine, so that every elected official would know. I mean, we could have everybody on the list, but I thought for convenience, one person.
Okay, and the other?
I just have one other thought, please, if my day.
Oh, sure.
Okay. In my thought process this morning, I guess what it boils down to in my mind is I definitely want someone who is looking out for Mojave County and taking care of us. Now, if that means a part-time employee, actually, for Mojave County, maybe that's more in line with taking care of us. I'm just... I'm just not sure about that. But I have a problem with just a lobbyist. You know?
I think, Madam Chair, if I may. I think the difference is I do not believe that somebody can look at the Internet and tell what's going on down there, what bills are there, can do a good enough job. I believe they have to be there because obviously, bills go forward. And when they... When bills are assigned, especially on a strike-all, if somebody's strike-all, if you're not familiar, it's a bill that says, "Save dogs." And they put it in the end for just a placeholder, and then they keep that bill so that they can strike all the language. And then they change it to, "No more atomic weapons in Mojave County," or whatever. That goes through on a... It could go through on a two-hour period. And at the legislature, it's how bills are assigned. The more committees, the less chance it has passing. Well, every legislature has some pet project they wanna sneak through. And so, at the last minute, they do a strike-all. They put it on. It gets assigned to just two committees, and that can be heard that day. And if we don't have somebody in the hallways that says, oh, yeah, by the way, somebody's running a strike-all today, or they're talking about it, they're gonna do it, the only thing we do is hear when it's printed in the paper and it's too late.
And, you know, I... Again, I saw this as a specific job. And it's morphed into sort of an administrative position that we've talked about all these different things at different times. And I think they are two different issues. And I think if we put them together, we're losing out on each because they're a specific set of qualifications and knowledge. And I don't think that just one person... You know, you can keep track of everything, but we need more than that. We need an area of expertise that I don't think one person can provide. So that's all I've got to say. So we have a motion on the table?
We do.
And we have a second?
I believe Supervisor Watson can second my motion.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Do we need it read? Or are we ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, the ayes have it. So staff will go and find someone to do this for us? Is that how it works?
I guess, Madam Chair, now you're gonna have to advertise for this position. And they have to be ready to open running in January to do it. And their six-month period, it's gonna be a tough, tough fill, I can see.
Madam Chairman, Supervisors, this is a temporary position. If we find somebody qualified for this position, the person can be hired directly without advertising. So if there is a qualified individual that would accept the conditions of employment that would be presented as per the proposed budget, that person could be hired almost immediately. There wouldn't... The county wouldn't necessarily have to go through a regular employment advertising process. I could hire him directly.
Okay.
One comment or question, maybe? Okay. But that person is going... I know Supervisor Johnson talked about watching the Internet. But that person is going to be expected to be in the hallways down there at the legislature, right?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Brotherton, in the budget, I placed a considerable amount for travel, which would at least allow somebody to be down there at the legislature one day a week, possibly two days a week.
So when all is said and done, all the money that we're putting into this position, we probably could've hired a full-time lobbyist to champion all our issues, to, you know... So again, this is really not what I thought we were first talking about, but we've made... It's been decided. Correct?
And I guess, Madam Chair, if I may. Now, I'm confused. Mr. Hendrix, before, when you were talking, you said you'd put in for one day every two weeks. Now you're saying one or two days a week? Did I misunderstand before when you said? That they were traveling to Phoenix.
When, when I originally did the budget, and I believe Watson presented to the Board of Supervisors accounts for at least one day a week travel to Phoenix.
To wander the halls? Okay, let's move on. Supervisor Watson, anything else?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I will have to return to traveling on the road. Thank you very much for moving that item to the agenda spot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to y'all.
Okay, so now we go back to the official business. Do we have any committee on our legislative reports?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
National Association of Counties Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee held a meeting. What we talked about this time was water reuse, recycling. Regulatory Affairs Manager for American Water Works Association spoke about the challenges and opportunities he sees associated with water reuse. One of the challenges, he said, was that many different definitions people give to the words reuse. Reusing water is sometimes misunderstood. The term should be associated with water reclamation. There are not many federal regulations in regards to it, but there are local ones and they vary by state. One other challenge you mentioned was how to find the right treatment for it. Depending on how one decides to reuse the water will depend on it if it needs treatment and if it needs environmental barriers attached to it to make the water usable for human interaction. He also integrated planning is needed for water resource management in order to make sustainable solutions. Some of the benefits to water reuse are the overall cost savings associated with it. There are a lot of costs to consider through, such as cost of moving water out of disposal, the cost of gray water management, and the cost of pre-treatment programs. Also involved in that is, is we're getting, we're seeing more and more cities that are coming up with prescription drugs in their water systems when they are testing them now. I mean, there's, it's becoming a major problem. I also attended U.S. Chamber of Commerce. They had a, had a conference call for chamber members on the new Common Core standards. U.S. Chamber's top priority is education because they feel that education is a top, top economic issue at the time. During the call, they mentioned, these are their opinions, why they felt Common Core was important for our youth. They felt that the educational curriculum contained in Common Core will give our youth, get our youth up to par. The latest numbers released from the program, which, it's called the PISA program, which is 15-year-old program that compares all developed countries on their educational developments in math, science, technology, ranked the U.S. 26th in math, 21st in science, and 17th in reading. Our numbers are dropping, and now countries like Poland and Ireland are surpassing us. Statistics also show that half of the undergraduates are having to take high school reading classes at the community college level because they don't have the skills to pass the college entrance exams in reading. The U.S. Chamber will be releasing information packets, toolkits, host strategy sessions next year for communities and chamber members regarding education and the importance of Common Core. Also had a conference with the people at Casper Lab, an Internet security company, put together a webinar to go over the threats affecting businesses in today's technological world, along with how IT departments should calculate the cost of protection. They listed some of the interesting statistics on how cyber threats have changed over the past 10 years. One example they gave was how in 2009, Casper Sky Labs saw an average of roughly 500,000 threats a day. In just under four years, they have seen this threat jump to over 4 million a day. They mentioned that vulnerabilities are the biggest problems facing organizations today. In the first half of 2013, they found over 30,900,000 vulnerable programs and files that were detected on users' computers running their security software. They mentioned that third-party applications account for 87% of all vulnerabilities. Study done by Purdue University found that malicious software can spread to 500,000 devices in 100 seconds. They mentioned that most business decisions related to IT are made based on money and not on the real cost of what a cyber attack would incur. The average cost of a cyber attack on enterprise today is $649,000 per incident. For small businesses, it is $92,000 per incident. With more complex devices and technical, technology coming out on a daily basis, a multi-layer defense is needed that includes costs associated with protection, performance, management, and support. That's all, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Okay, I've already made a couple of mistakes, so please forgive me. We have to go back, and I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held January 6, 2014, at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I also made a tremendous mistake. There was somebody, Mr. Jim Buster, signed up to speak for item 29. And I, because it all got flip-flopped in the beginning, I apologize profusely to Mr. Buster. Okay, next, we have a county administrator's report.
I have no report today, Madam Chairman.
Okay, and I need a motion to approve the revised May 6, 2013 Board of Supervisor Meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the call to public. Those wishing to address the Board at the call to public regarding matters not on the Board's agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk of the call, the clerk a call to the public, request to speak for him. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral of staff for placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board. We have someone signed up, Mr. Gary Hill. Please come down and state your name and your address.
Good, good morning. Gary Hill, Bullhead City. Happy holidays.
Your address, please.
Box 2214, Bullhead City, 86430. Thank you. Veterans Day was November 11th. The rest of the year, society, elected officials, police, and judges don't think it matters. My elected official last month called me and said she could not help me. I stood up as a whistleblower against big government and paid the price. Ho-hum, life goes on. No one really cares. It is not Veterans Day. My governor in California once told me that government is the problem. And so it is here in Arizona and Mojave County. You say you are against big government to get votes, but turn your back on veterans when asked to stand up against it. I served my country for a couple decades and only asked local officials to keep their word so the rest of us won't suffer. Last month, wearing my Navy hat, I stopped briefly to rest my tired legs at the Rose Bowl. A middle-aged UCLA fan came running out of her car yelling at me for having a cigar, about 95% finished. She threatened to call the police. "You must treat me nicely," Jack Nicholson said in A Few Good Men. I would have kept walking without a second thought. She had to be nasty and threaten me with a false police report. I drove 300 miles to watch ASU beat UCLA, not get harassed. As I was leaving, I said to her unfortunate husband, this is how we treat our veterans. A few days later, I took my San Francisco friend to make a bank deposit at my local branch in Bullhead City. He had made similar deposits without incident at the same bank near Pac Bell Park. The lady manager refused. Jim, my friend, asked to call her boss. She refused. Jim never raised his voice or threatened any bank employees. The manager told him to leave immediately and threatened to call the police. We lost our innocence 50 years ago when an assassin took our young president. I saw his assassin live on TV as a 13-year-old. We cannot trust our government or big business. We don't even trust our veterans in our simple, everyday lives. Thank you very much, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, anyone else wish to speak, a call to public? Okay, seeing none, call to public is closed. Now we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5 to 25 will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Do we have any items that need to be pulled? Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bretherton?
No.
Supervisor Moss?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to approve items 5 through 25.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, next. We have public hearings. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Item number 26, brought to us by the Public Works Director. Discussion and possible action regarding approval and authorization for the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. BOS Resolution Number 213-179, establishing Beaver Dam Cemetery Road from Rio Virgin Road to the Beaver Dam Cemetery grounds, a county highway for the purpose of developing a public access road to the Beaver Dam Cemetery grounds.
Do you have anyone signed up, Madam Chair?
There is someone signed up to speak. Peggy Owen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name and address.
My name is Peggy Owen. I live at 970 Alamo Avenue in Beaver Dam. And I'd just like to say I am in favor of the current question. We desperately need a road out to the cemetery. We had one, but apparently it was on private land and it's been blocked. We have, the majority of our population is of retirement age, and they cannot walk, especially in the heat or the cold, up to the cemetery. It is up high on a plateau. So we are very much in favor of getting a road built. I believe it's going to be off the road from the old high school, or from the high school on over to the cemetery. Is that correct? Does anybody know where the road is proposed to go?
Madam Chairman, if we, if you'd like, we could get our Public Works Director down here to explain exactly where that's...
Might as well come down now and...
Aye.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The following map display shows the specific alignment of the approximate 350-foot public access road that would be developed as part of this action. Right here is the Beaver Dam Cemetery. It is owned by Mojave County. And what Public Works proposes is establishing a county highway for the purpose of establishing, as you see in the horizontal purple line, a 350-foot public access driveway from Rio Virgin Road, which is currently maintained by the county. If this action were to move ahead, there's really two steps involved. One, we have already had some discussions with the Littlefield Unified School District, and they do appear, the district, willing to dedicate a 50-foot right-of-way to establish this roadway to the public. And the Public Works Department would also act to improve the roadway for public travel to and from the Beaver Dam Cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a question. Can you explain to us why we don't have better access now?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, it is quite honestly unknown to me why the existing access has been used all this time. But as Ms. Owen has pointed out, it does cross private property. The current access on the map comes in from the south, and it does cross a private property. So presently, there is no direct public access to the cemetery, and this action would resolve that issue.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, you have another thing, Ms. Owen?
Is this to be a dirt road that will be graded occasionally, or will it be a paved road?
Mr. Latasky?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we anticipate hard surfacing the road with asphalt millings.
Okay.
Asphalt millings that crumbled? Will it be rolled?
Yes, it would be hard surface, so it would not be a gravel road, but one that would be a hard surface, very like a pavement.
Well, I've seen what the milling roads look like, and they get all washboarded. Will somebody roll it occasionally to keep it flat? Will it be, how will the maintenance occur?
Madam Chair, I think we're getting beyond the scope of this, this issue.
Right, well, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, and we'll try to get some of your questions answered. Okay, do I have a motion, I closed the public hearing?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. We're off to the regular agenda. Number 27, discussion and possible action to provide an update to the Board on property liens, where the Board has placed a lien on a property in an attempt to recover costs associated with county abatement of dangerous buildings or a court placed a lien on a property in an attempt to recover costs associated with health nuisance cleanup. Entertained motion?
I move that we discuss item 27 of the agenda.
Motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discuss.
I think I brought this up, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I think I brought this up last meeting on what we could do to ensure until we get some kind of legislation. Now, we have some legislation going on. CSA is, I think, doing some work for us and lobbying for us to get some legislation to make these liens a little more binding. And I don't know what we do to, and in particular, and I meant to bring it with me this morning, I have a bunch of papers on one of the places that we spent quite a lot of money on, cleaning up and everything, and then it went into foreclosure. And our lien just went by the wayside when it went into foreclosure. So I'm wondering, is there anything we're doing or can do to ensure that that lien stays on there? Or is that entirely up to the institution that, that repossesses their property or forecloses on the property? Can you answer that for me, Mr. Hunt?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bretherton, if I may give you a little background, there are two types of property liens that we pursue. And the one I think that you're asking about is administered by the Development Services Department, and we're using the Building Code where we have dangerous facilities that the Building Code allows us to abate. And many times, we have to demolish the property. Our first option, of course, is to find a property owner and then make the property owner to clean up. And we are very successful doing that. And then there's a, there's those properties that we can't find a property, or it just disappeared, you know, passed away, or that we can't find them, moved away. And then we have a dangerous situation. And our second option is to secure the property, just board it up and fence it up. But in those really worst cases where it's a, it's a danger and it's highly visible and there's nothing else to do, then we use our, our powers under the Building Code, the Property Maintenance Code, to abate the property and, like I said, demolish the property. And these are the cases, I think, that we're talking about. And then we come back to the Board and we ask the Board to put a lien on the property to recover our costs. And, and the problem is, what you are asking specifically, the problem is that we don't have a property owner. Otherwise, we would collect, we would try to collect on the lien. And then these properties go up for sale, and then the, the property tax lien tramps everything else, and that gets recovered, and we don't get our lien back, and that is an issue. And to correct that, we looked at several options, working with the county attorney's office. And Dolores Milk here at the county attorney's office has been very helpful. And the number one option is, of course, to change the legislation because the, this type of liens don't have any protection. So working with Dolores, actually, she submitted on behalf of the county a legislative proposal to, to give protection for these liens and make it a priority lien. And if it goes through, then, then we should be able to collect on it. The other options are that we are considering to come to the Board on case-by-case basis is to, on those properties where the taxes are not worth the property value or the property has a large lien, lien amount, a relatively large lien amount, the Board actually may consider foreclosure. And, and that way, you know, it would make it a priority lien. But for those cases, you have to work with the county attorney's office, and we haven't done it so far. So I want to emphasize that on those cleanups or abatements that we have done, we haven't collected any because we don't have property owners. And these are the, these cases are the worst of the worst. And just couldn't find a property owner so we couldn't, you know, collect the lien so far. Now, the other program that's going on, it's a very successful program that's under the Health Department to clean up trash and nuisance garbage on the properties. It's a different type of lien. They go to, go to the court and get a court order, and they almost always have the property owners. And those are smaller liens also, because they don't necessarily demolish the property. Most cases, they just clean it up. So since they have the property owners, it's their interest to clean up, and they're collecting on most of the liens, or probably all of them. collecting on most of the liens, or probably all of them.
Well, Mr. Hunt, I was always under the impression that the lien was on the property, not the property owner, and it should follow that property wherever it goes. Whoever forecloses on that, I would think, should have to assume that lien as a part of what is owed on the property. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I always, I always thought that a lien that was filed legally like that stayed with the property.
Can I say something? As I understand it, being homeowner associations, there are different kinds of liens, and then when a property goes into foreclosure, there are liens that actually go away, that they're not, I don't know the, I don't know what the legal word is.
There's liens which have higher priority.
Higher priority.
And that's based upon your timing of recording the lien, and I believe that's what the legislation that we're sponsoring in Phoenix this session is designed to get around, so our lien would survive despite the transfer.
Exactly, so I believe that we're doing everything we can do in our power as a board to hopefully recover some of these costs.
Yes, Madam Chair, you're absolutely right, and the case is that property tax liens have higher priority than anything else, and then they're always ahead of our liens.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think we're missing part of it here, the foreclosures are not, it's not somebody's house, there's not like, somebody's leaving a house, these are pieces of property that have been abandoned, that have no bank that owns them, we're the ones that are foreclosing. We have the ability as a county to just say, okay, we're taking over that piece of property and forgiving the taxes, and then selling it to get our money back, we should have been doing that.
Do we have that ability?
Yes, Madam Chair.
It seems to me.
The way I understand, the county attorney's office advised me, Dolores is working with us, that yes, county would have that authority, we haven't done this, but that's, that could be done on a case-by-case basis, and it could be cases like Supervisor Johnson pointed out, that the lien that we put on actually exceeds the property value, or, so it would make sense to foreclose and then collect the lien first, and we are working with the county attorney's office to pursue that.
Very good. Is there any action to be taken from this?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
If I could?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman Angus, Supervisors. One of the issues that we have with this is, we've been working for the last year, and it probably will take us another year or two, with the county attorney that's designated for us, Dolores Milky, to derive a list of all of the properties that we can bring to the board and say, okay, here are all the properties that are not selling at tax lien sale, we cannot sell them because the, it's cost prohibitive, because the taxes are more than what the property's worth, and does the board want to foreclose on them? The problem is that we believe, at this point, that it will cost between $500,000 and $1,000,000 for us to foreclose on them, so we're gonna put a plan together that says, over this many years, we'd like the board to put in this much money every single year, so we can go ahead and do that. There's a cost for us to foreclose, unfortunately, and I'm not really sure how this came about, but we pay a title company to search our records for the chain of title. Not really sure why we don't do that, but maybe Bill could explain that to me, Lori's tried to a couple of times, I still don't get it. But anyway, we, that's a lot of the cost, I think that's about $300 to $500 per property for us to pay for, and then, we want to continue and say, okay, so, if we do this, and these properties become board property, they're actually, it's, they're state property that now the Board of Supervisors has the right to hold a sale, and I think it's called a clerk sale, and the last time you did that was 2007 or 2008, and it was very costly, and it was kind of cherry-picked the properties that were, that went to the board's sale, that's my understanding, what I've been told. So we want to be able to bring something to you that makes sense, that says, here, here are all the properties, this is what it will cost, these are the things that we can do, and here's the sale that you can, you know, the options that you have to sell these properties. Part of the problem is that it's very time-consuming to get through all of them, and to find out which ones are not selling. We had, we brought $36 million to the property tax lien sale last year, and we sold 7 million. So we have a lot of property out there, and a lot of that is fees, it's not taxes, it's fees, that we likely are going to ask to be forgiven. Part of the issue with the liens that Mr. Hunt is talking about, is that if we add those to the liens that are on the property, you now have less property that will sell at the tax lien sale. So we're gonna be coming to you one way or another, either asking you to forgive the liens on, that the Health Department and the Development Services are applying to these properties, or forgive the taxes, because otherwise, we would not be able to sell them. So, it will be, it's gonna be at least another year before we have something together for you, but we planned it for the end of next year, so.
If I may, Madam Chair, when you put this list of properties together, could you also, in association with the assessor's office or the recorder's office, create a map so that we can chart where these properties are at? Because it occurs to me, there's a flood control project in one of the neighborhoods in my district a year or so back, and the county wound up having to buy some lots to make it work. It occurs to me that if we cherry-pick these properties, we could kill two birds with one stone, which is foreclose on them for purposes of flood control projects and things of that nature, so it would be a more cost-effective transaction for the county.
Absolutely, would be my pleasure.
Madam Chair, I think we probably need to look at it, maybe Attorney Ekstrom can get involved, when you're talking about we have to do a title search, when we sell these properties, we're selling them, you know, as-is, and nobody else does a title search. I mean, it says, it's recorded with the treasurer, it's assessed by the assessor to John Doe, and these people buy it, and they get the title, and they just put it in their name. I'm not sure why we would have to title search each and every one of them, and because what we're doing is, you're just, if it's a, obviously, we have to go out there and clean it up, and we're spending thousands of dollars for person X to walk up and pay us $50 to buy the property, and thank you taxpayers for doing it, you know, I mean, there's no money back, so I think we don't, I don't believe we have to do the title search. Let them sue us, that's what we have attorneys for.
Supervisor Johnson, I would, I would love to know that that's the case.
Yeah.
Okay, can we look into that?
Yes.
Do you have maybe a couple you can do, sort of like a test case this year, so we can, so we can get an idea if it's really cost prohibitive? We'll know quickly whether it's something that, and then, while we work simultaneously with CSA to get this done down in Phoenix.
I think I can give you the answer for the title search issue, and Attorney Ekstrom can correct me, there's two. One is, and the most important one is insurance, if we think we're foreclosing on an abandoned property, and it turned out to be occupied by a family, they would sue us for a very lot of money, and if we have to write it out of the general funds in that case, if on the other hand, we had a title policy, that's an insurance policy, that the record and everyone got notice like they were supposed to, and the insurance company would then have to pay if we foreclosed on the wrong piece of property. So, the second is, and I'm just guessing, the county administration would have to say this, but in my private practice, when I foreclose, I do the title search not just for the insurance, but also to know who I give notice of the foreclosures to. So if it costs $150 to get this insurance, or title insurance company who has an electronic database to tell me who I have to give notice to, as opposed to having an attorney or an employee go through the recorder's office and thumb through the books and pages and figure out the chains of titles, it may be very, be cost-effective, is what it comes down to.
Right, and Madam Chair, I think with all of our properties, they're all vacant, we don't, I don't think the times we've done, unless it's an old abandoned trailer or something that we had to clean off, but we've never, there's nothing of value, or if somebody else would have picked up on the tax sale.
Okay, any other?
And my understanding as well is that it has to be a treasurer's deed, we do it through a treasurer's deed, and to have a treasurer's deed, you have to have a title search, and to have a treasurer's deed, you also cannot get title insurance except for one title company right now. The rest of the title companies will not insure them because of the problems that they've had with treasurer's deeds not being, not having proper title search, or serving, you know, notice on all of the people that own the property, so.
There are a lot of laws which make very little sense.
Yes.
So, including that we can only build up to a certain value within house on repairs on roads, and then we have to put it out for bid.
Right, right, and what we're working on right now, just so you know, we can stop work on this and shift to maybe pulling out some of the properties so you're able to see them, what we're working on right now is the properties that were given back during the depression, and no paperwork, there's no trail, they didn't come and give a deed or sign anything over, we have about 100 and, well, I talked to Jean about it, we have about 160, I think, 146 properties that are like that. So, we're working on doing some investigation and finding out who the owners are, so that we can notify and foreclose on them, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, item 28, brought to us by procurement, discussion possible action to direct staff regarding real property known as Arnold Plaza, located 301 and 303 Oak Street, Kingman, further identified as APN 303-08-151 and 153, hold a new public auction in accordance with ARS 11-251, auctioning the property, or at the, auctioning the property at the appraised fair market value and expanding advertising for the auction process, or two, in accordance with ARS 11-251-58, with unanimous consent of the Board of Supervisors, sell the property at less than fair market value to any other governmental entity, or for a specific purpose to any charitable, social, or benevolent nonprofit organization incorporated or operating in this state, or three, authorize staff to re-roof and paint the property for future sale in hopes the market improves, and approve budget funding for a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000, or four, authorize staff to issue a solicitation for demolition services of the property, and approve budget funding for an amount not to exceed $635,000. This was continued by the board at our November 18, 2013 meeting. I will make a motion to discuss.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, I'll just start, you know, we've been speaking about this, this has been going on for a long time, it's about a piece of property that is just standing there abandoned, and we were going to knock it down, and thought better of it, being that it is over a half a million dollars, we were looking at opportunities for sale or for refurbishing, and so, we, none of that has come to pass so far, so now we're back discussing what our options are.
I'll go first, Madam Chair, if you would. I have, and I've looked at this and thought about it, and again, it comes down to money and getting value for money, there is no value for money that the board can obtain from this property, it's, the question is, how much do we lose? So, in my view, when it comes to this property, we have, I believe, we should be considering primarily two actions. One is giving it to another government agency or charity and making it their problem, that would save us a lot of expense, or two, doing nothing with it, no painting, no fixing up the roofs, board it up and let it rot, that costs us no money either, and those are the two options I think that we really should be considering with this property. That's my personal view when it comes to writing checks on this issue.
Supervisor Brotherton?
Yes, I tend to agree with you, Supervisor Boss, however, I did get a call from a gentleman just the other day, and he was on his way to Phoenix, so our connection wasn't real good, it was going in and out. When he gets back to town, he wants to talk to us about this, or talk to me about this, and I'm not for spending one penny on that property. Now, if this man has, he has an idea that maybe he could take it, and he could do the cleaning up, et cetera, et cetera, anyway, he kind of ran some things by me, and I said, well, listen, let's talk about it, and let's see, because I said, I'm, I for one, and I'm just one of the Board of Supervisors, I'm not for spending any money on this property, and it looks like the figures are pretty high here on doing anything with it. So I will talk with him, just as soon as he gets back in town, I'll keep trying to make contact with him, find out when he's gonna be here, and we'll just go from there, and I'll certainly give a report to all of you just as soon as possible.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson, nothing? Okay, I'll enter a motion.
How long will it be until this gentleman returns to town, Supervisor Brotherton?
Pardon?
How long until he comes back to town?
Well, I think he was gonna be back sometime this week, this was just a few days ago that I talked to him.
Madam Chair, I think it may be prudent then, since, that maybe we continue this until the next meeting, in order to get additional information that Supervisor Brotherton may be able to develop.
Okay.
Can we do it 30 days? Six hundred and thirty?
Yeah, I think, I move to continue item 28 for a period of approximately 30 days to the second meeting in January, and in order to allow Supervisor Brotherton additional time to develop this information.
Great, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. We've already taken care of 29. Number 30, discussion and possible action to designate John Timko, Financial Services Director, as the point of contact to address tax rates charged and collected by businesses under Mojave County's taxing authority.
Motion approved.
Second.
If I may say something, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
I've been abusing Mr. Timko in this role for the past six months with various taxing questions, so I think he's been very good at it.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Thirty-two, no, thirty, 31, oh, okay, 31, brought to us by Supervisor Johnson, discussion and possible action. One, discussion of cost estimates for the proposed medical examiner building, the county morgue, approval of construction of a new building or renovation of an existing building or lease a building, and identification of source of funding for the project, and two, approval of establishing the medical examiner services and staff as a department within Mojave County, or continue to contract out these functioned services and staff after June 30, 2015. This was continued by the board from many meetings, October 7, 21, and November 4. Okay, we have, someone signed up to speak to this, Mr. Michael Seitz.
I'd like to hear what you guys do. Is that possible? No?
Sure.
It's not a public hearing.
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
No, no.
I'm speaking from what I don't really know, I just came to the meeting to try to hear as much as I could on this project.
Your name and address, please.
Michael Seitz, Kingman resident here in Kingman, 450 Rahai Drive, Kingman, for many years, and I'm a property owner of a property I believe would possibly work for this location of the morgue, it's here in town, and it's a light industrial building, it's got approval for crematoriums, on the city zoning code, it's approved for these type of uses, which, it's an old market basket location over here on Airway, and it's located at 2851 Airway. I wanted to hear what the county's talking about leasing properties for this type of use. This property I have is already equipped with a 35-foot refrigerator cooler, would be great for storage bodies, I guess, but that's a macabre situation, and there's a couple of freezers in there as well, would also lend to the use of this, I just thought, well, I'd like to hear what you guys was, the county's plan was to, with regard to acquisition or continuing the lease, it's a long way off in 2015, but I read on the 1100 block, I could not find the actual morgue, what the actual square footage of morgue is over there, it looks like it could be up to 6,000 square foot, the building I own over there is 1,350 square foot, so it's minimal, or I guess, smaller than the 36,000 square foot that I saw in the county, that's 1100, where the medical examiner is out in Lake Havasu, it shows as an 1100 block of Havasu Drive out there in Havasu, I thought, well, I would be, as a property owner, be willing to construct a building that would accommodate, subject to lease agreements, whatnot, with the county, to fulfill, you know, their needs on the morgue, and mortuary, or not the morgue, but the medical examiner.
Mr. Seitz?
Yes.
Was this building a mortuary, a morgue?
It was not.
With all the freezers? Oh, okay, all right, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
It was a meat market.
It was a meat market.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I'll enter a motion on this.
I move to discuss item 31.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who wants to start?
I'll start. This is how I've been doing the math in my head, and if the county administration has data which contradicts what we're data which contradicts what I'm going to say, throw it in my direction so I can maybe change my opinion. We're talking about running or building or remodeling a building from anywhere from one point, from $1 million to $1.7 million, which is an initial outweigh. Then we're going to bring medical examiner services in-house for a little over $800,000 per year. We're currently receiving those services for roughly, I think it was $525 a year. So we're spending one to one million to 1.7 million as a first-time payment, then each and every year, we're spending roughly $300,000 more than what we're currently receiving. I will say that because the board gave me the time, I did speak with several hospital individuals. Hospitals have no interest in doing this service. What it comes down to is they're places of healing, they're not places of investigating causes of death and reporting it to the law enforcement authorities and they don't want to mix the two. So I do believe that Supervisor Johnson's correct in that we have to do something and we can do one of two things. One, we can build or lease a building, remodel or build for $1 million to 1.7 million and employ in-house for $800,000, which is roughly $300,000 more than we're currently spending. Or we can go out to an RFP and it comes down to dollars. That's a lot of money we're talking about, a lot more above and beyond what we're spending. And I would do everything possible to avoid bringing this in-house because of the millions that we'd be spending. Over 10 years, that's $3 million additional. First-time expenditure, that's $1 million minimum, so we're talking about $4 million to get over a 10-year period what we're currently getting now. So I am very hesitant on item 31.
Yes, Supervisor Brotherton.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to apologize to you guys because I haven't stayed on the hospital like I should have to get the information. I took all the information and the figures over to Brian Turney and the two new pathologists who were supposed to get back with me with some figures. They are very up to date on what it would take and they did feel like, in looking at our figures, that they were quite high. They felt like that we could do something much less than those 1.8 or whatever. Anyway, they did not get back with me before this meeting. When I called, Brian Turney called me back and he really apologized. He said, "The pathologists have kind of been busy." Of course, it's been the holidays and people have been gone, what have you. So I am going to still push them because I just really would like to have their information to bring and at least give to you. But anyway, I'm not going to get that until this week. He promised me I would have it this week, so there again, maybe I'll have some information for you at the next meeting.
Supervisor Johnson?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Moss brings up some good points, I think, as far as the construction and I've had people call me from around the United States because they've seen this in the news and claim that they think it's a high-dollar figure, but I'd rather be higher than lower. And also, I think we can expand with other counties to possibly do their work. That offsets a lot of costs or will help us there. I've had this gentleman that came forward with his offer. There's also a gentleman, I don't know if he contacted other board members, who is willing to offer us land free of charge in the Mojave Valley area if we want it. I think we have to go ahead and build a site, build a building and I believe, I'm the opposite of Supervisor Moss, not on the money aspect, but I think that we need to have it in-house where we have control for the sheriffs and the county attorneys. I don't know if we have the price to begin with, maybe Mr. Hendricks has it, but we started out with a contract that was a lot less expensive than it is today and it continues to go up and you see as, when you said as board members, they came back the contract that we have now and wanted more money, so it's hard to say. I think we can control costs better and the quality by having it in-house than we can by going out, so I would like to see us build it. The price, we put a quarter cent sales tax which is set to expire. I think this would probably be the last building we could build and we could pay cash for it. It's not something that's coming out of the taxing money, it's coming out of the quarter cent that was set aside just for building a building.
Do we not have a building already that maybe could be remodeled or?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Brotherton, we do have either A or some possibilities of county-owned facilities that could be remodeled. I'm not sure if OMB took that into their consideration on creating these cost estimates, but it could cheapen the costs up considerably for the initial investment if we did utilize one of our existing buildings. One of the buildings that has been discussed is the sign shop out on, by the Hardy complex. And I've talked to Public Works Director Steve Lutowski on what his need was for that facility and he said that his operations isn't needing to utilize that existing facility so it would be available for some future use.
I think, Madam Chair, to answer Supervisor Brotherton's thoughts, when we do remodels, you can see we don't do a very good job of them. And when you're looking for a corner solve, I think, cost-wise in the long run, if we build a building that is built, that has the place for the storage of the bodies and office space and everything else, I think we'll get a better deal because you see like in Havasu where we're adding on to the court we have down there. Other buildings we have, we're adding on because we bought a building and didn't have it planned for the future. So I think by building a building, we'll come out cheaper in the long run because they have to have the air conditioning and all those things, the drains have to be different and the area.
Okay, so it sounds like we still have a lot of information we're gathering, these people who want to give us land and how much the real costs are, so.
Well, Madam Chair, I think we need to make a decision whether it's do nothing and stay with the contract or go out for a bid. I mean, we're running out of time because it would take, you know, a year to build or if you're going out for another contract, we've got to get that because that person gave us, they gave this board a deadline saying they were out of the business. Now, I understand they want to come back in, but you're at their mercy every year.
Yeah, she hasn't talked like she's anxious to leave, to me.
Yeah, I just don't know if I'm ready to make that commitment today with still with not having all the information and, you know, how about liability? When we contracted out, they take all the liability.
They have private insurance, I believe.
Right, and so that's, we'd be taking that on. I mean, I think there are lots of other costs involved that I still want to know about.
If I can make a suggestion, Madam Chair, I know this will be imposing on Supervisor Johnson again, but it seems like I've heard some things that we've identified which is currently not known. One is Supervisor Brotherton has a pathology group which is interested. And by the way, when I spoke with the hospital, I believe Mr. Hepler was with me, they mentioned trying to find a pathology group out of Phoenix or Vegas who'd be, because they more likely have a forensic pathologist who'd be willing to come down here a couple of days a week if we were going to keep it private. But, so we have some pathology grouped information we need to get. Secondly, if I'm hearing things correctly from the county administration, there is an issue with costs. It seems like everyone's acknowledging the costs are high. Well, maybe those numbers should be redone so we know exactly what we're authorizing as the realistic costs as opposed to the overly high cost. And finally, I believe Supervisor Johnson mentioned there's some land that may be donated somewhere that we might want to know more about. So we have which building if we're going to refurbish, which land if we're going to build, what's the actual cost as opposed to some of, I'm understanding now perhaps exaggerated costs. And also this pathology group that Supervisor Brotherton has managed to stay in contact with, all of which I think are very, all of which are very good reasons, I think, to continue this yet again with no resolution. And so I would make a motion that we continue item 31 for a period of one meeting, two meetings?
Thirty.
In order to get those costs and that information spelled out so we know exactly what we're voting for. Because I am not voting for a $1 million to $1.7 million building or an $825,000 pathology or medical examiner unit. So if they're going to change minds, at least on this side of the table, we need better information.
Well, I'll second that.
For discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think the staff came, brought us all the numbers that they can get as far as, I don't know what else they can bring us, but what we want to do in the meantime, if it's, you put it off 30 days or 60 days, a request for proposals from just out there to say, if there is property, because I told this one person that had contacted me, I said, "Well, until we decide what direction we're going in, I don't want to bother you." But, and we have a gentleman here who has come forward and some kind of a request for proposal on sites just to get information.
That would actually be constructive, I think.
And you want to amend that?
Yeah, I amend my motion to put it out. How long does it take to get an RFP which is legitimate?
60 days. Mr. Chairman, procurement's requesting 90 days.
So 90 days would be enough time to get them out and get the answers back? Then I amend my motion to defer this item, table this item for a period of 90 days to bring it back sometime in the middle of March for purposes of allowing the administration to do requests for proposals for either the lease or purchase of land necessary to house a medical examiners.
And I will second that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. 32, Financial Services Director, discussion and possible action, approve the board of supervisor resolution 213-182 as Mojave County's election to receive full payment of the Secure Rural Schools Act state payment and provide Mojave County Treasurer approval to allocate 60% of the funding to HERF and 40% of the funding to school superintendent upon receipt.
Motion to approve.
I second for discussion.
Okay.
Didn't we use this money last time for, or are we just, for Chairman Watson to travel?
Mr. Johnson, the federal statute that makes these funds available predicate that they're split 60-40 between HERF and a school superintendent.
All right. That's the only question I have.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I ask approximately how much, how many dollars we're, you know, not percentages, but dollars we're talking about?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, approximately $10,000 total. This is a formality we have to go through to notify the governor with the board resolution that we want to accept it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 32 of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, discussion and possible action to approve the revised Mojave County Board of Supervisors 2014 meeting calendar.
I move to approve item 33 of the agenda.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And last but not least, discussion and possible action, the election of the chairman and vice chairman of Mojave County Board of Supervisors for the calendar year of 2014.
If I could, Madam Chairman, I'm going to do a dirty deed to two people I care about very much and I move that we elect Hildy Angus as chairman and Joey Brotherton as vice chairman for calendar year 2014 for the Mojave County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and I have to say it looks like I have it. Okay. And before we adjourn.
I don't think you'll be treating this as a good thing.
No. Well, before we adjourn, on behalf of the board of supervisors, I want to wish our staff and all our employees and all the citizens of Mojave County a very, very Merry Christmas, happy, healthy, and safe new year. This meeting's adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.
[inaudible][1680.76]